We good?
Yes.
Alright. So, welcome to our February 4th Regular Board of Education meeting. Can we do roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clapton.
Here.
Why would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I love a full house. This is great. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Winkelman right away because we've got some recognition to wanna...
Yeah. Thank you, Sandra. And I love a full house, too. This is a great evening. We have a lot of student recognitions and staff recognitions tonight. So, thank you, everyone, for coming out and joining us. Our first agenda item is to hear from one of our Roslyn Bulldogs. We have Maisie Malkin, who's a 5th grader at Roslyn, and she's gonna give a report on what's going on at Roslyn Road Elementary School. So, welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm so honored to be here tonight as a 5th grade Roslyn representative. Thank you so much for having me. My favorite tradition at Roslyn Road is the variety show. I love the variety show because we are the only school who does it, which makes it extra special. It gives the kids of our school an opportunity to boost their confidence onstage and have a fun activity with friends over the weekend, winter break, or even a random Tuesday. As well as making memories onstage solo or with friends, that is my favorite Roslyn tradition. How I demonstrate my responsibility or ownership is with my learning at Roslyn. Is proving that you're doing harder things makes you more powerful and confident with the skills that you have. I also learned resilience to keep going, don't care about what others think. I mainly focus on what I think and my empowerment. I focus on what I... myself and what I can do best to learn skills that you never knew that you might have or use. At Roslyn, my teachers, for the last six years, have made it better for me to concentrate on consistently keeping up with work and having a good mindset. For my learning that helps me most, being confident and learning not that people push you down is what helps me most. It seems that Roslyn makes my new passions come true. At first, I was very passionate about drawing and coloring in kindergarten. Ms. Looby, our art teacher, made me grow as an artist throughout elementary school. Ms. Looby helped me concentrate more on improving what I am already good at. I love art and I feel like I'm having a more artistic... I'm becoming more artistic with her help. My learning experiences were unbelievably helpful. When I was younger, I had difficulty speaking proudly. Roslyn helped me speak more confidently. Now, I love to express myself through writing. School inspired me to love language arts. In 4th grade, I wrote a creative story about Goldilocks and the moldy sandwich. And this... this year, I wrote an essay to you. Roslyn has helped me, especially others, feel so welcome to our school. Diversity is an important part of our school and what makes it special. Because I know everyone feels welcome and they really like what we are as Roslyn Bulldog community, like the culture walk-around. From our spring success last spring, when people set up their different stations, having the opportunity to experience many cultures so everyone could learn together. The culture walk-around put into action when everyone was being said about inclusivity and belonging. It spread this word about and was positively received by students and parents as something we value and plan to continue within our school activities. How I demonstrate my accountability is by showing responsibility for our school. As our 5th graders can be silly, I believe that we start showing more leadership. Some people, you know, do a perfect job of doing that. We are offered to participate in safety patrol, to help other kids in 3rd grade to guide them to the classes and set good examples. Most of my classmates participate in this and enjoy, and according to my teachers, we do an excellent job. Goal-setting has always been a New Year's resolution for me. Take accountability into getting better grades or journaling every day to become a better writer. Perseverance is important to me because it shows what kind of person you are. Lots of our 5th graders show perseverance in showing a challenge is no problem and putting their best effort as well. How I show my responsibility and perseverance is by following up with the schedule. Being responsible every day is important. Knowing who I am, I know that can always happen. Waking up fresh for the day, every day, every morning, is what I try to accomplish. Going to bed early is not my usual cup of tea. But every day, I give it my best effort. You don't only show leadership, you should show you care by giving your best effort every day. Your effort can define who you are to others, too. Every day, I have to feed my dog. I show responsibility through my care of my pet. By doing home tours or having independence can help develop responsibility. I visualize my plan as a pyramid. Eventually, my effort and follow-through on responsibility creates goal-setting, which at the top of the pyramid gets you to perseverance, great responsibility, accountability, goal-setting, and, most importantly, leadership. Accomplishing that can be... get more better by just one day. It can make your whole life easier and peaceful more than just doing... It can make your whole life easier and peaceful by just doing simple steps every day, builds upon future success. It shows what you have done and what you can accomplish if you stay focused on your goals and what you want to achieve. Thank you for listening and having an amazing night.
Maisie, I think you were like one paragraph in and I already wanted to give you a nickname. Mighty Maisie.
Yeah, there you go. That was an excellent report. Thank you for sharing so many things about your experiences at Roslyn. I have a question. What was your variety show? What did you do? Was that your question?
Actually, that, but I also wanna know what did the 5th graders do at this year?
Uh, we did...
So, you can answer both.
This year, we did Roslyn Pop Stars, and we dressed up as pop stars and there was reporters and everything, and we did some dances with boys and girls.
Keep using the microphones. Are there other questions?
Maisie, that was so inspiring. I feel like that could've been a graduation speech. That was awesome. I'm wondering, the culture walk-around, that sounds really cool. Is it newer for you?
It was last year.
Last year? Cool. Is there... what's something that you remember from maybe one of the stations or something that you learned from that?
I remember Norway, 'cause it was about Elsa and Anna.
Elsa and Anna in Norway. That is memorable. I'm glad that'll keep going. Sounds great.
I don't have a question, but I took mental notes on things to tell my kids tonight. So, I learned about resilience, perseverance, scheduling, and we should always be responsible. Like, I feel like you learned a lot. I'm taking that home to my kids, so thank you for such a great speech.
That's excellent. Others?
I was gonna say, before you go, do you wanna use the mic and introduce some folks to us that are setting the audience possibly?
You stole my line, too.
We're getting good at it.
Yeah. I think so.
This is my sister Lucy, my mom, my dad, my great-aunt, and my grandma, and then my teacher, Ms. Alfano, and my principal, Mr. Kirk.
Awesome.
The floor is still yours. Go for it.
And Ms. Looby, my art teacher.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mighty Maisie.
Can we... We do have...
Yep. For joining us tonight, would you mind if we took a picture with the board? We have a certificate for you as well as Barrington swag. So, do we have to take a picture together? Alright.
You get to be in the middle.
You guys will be up and down a few times tonight. Well, feel free to stick around.
We get it, we get it.
I need a copy of that speech.
That's good.
Yeah.
That was outstanding.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're not done... we are not done recognizing students tonight, so at this time, our next agenda item, I'd like to introduce Bridget Tylston, who's going to introduce and recognize our all-state musicians. So, come on up.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Bridget Tylston, and I'm the K-12 Director for Fine Visual and Performing Arts, and I'm so excited tonight to present our all-state musicians. So, we have nine students from Barrington High School and two from Prairie Middle School. But before we start, I just wanna reference back to the Barrington 220 mission, which is, of course, to inspire excellence in every learner. And I just... I thank the board and Dr. Winkelman from the bottom of my heart for your support of the arts, starting at a young age and developing the talent and supporting these students to achieve these great things, because it's a big deal to become an all-state musician, which is why we're honoring these students here tonight. So, students awarded the all-state musician title through the Illinois Music Association are vetted through a rigorous audition process at the school level, at the district level, in one of the most competitive areas of the state where we have many schools with fine music programs, and then ultimately at the state level. The small number of students selected for each instrument and award were celebrated last weekend at the ILMEA Music Festival. And so, tonight, we're going to recognize the students one by one. They'll go over and receive a little swag bag from our music staff. So, we're starting out with Sally Dong. Tell if you can come up. Congratulations. So, Sally was selected for the all-state honors band on the part of flute, and you can... yeah, you can do it this way. Come over here. And her involvement in BHS Fine Arts is in symphonic band, symphonic orchestra, marching broncos, and pep band. And actually, for each of these students tonight, I asked our high school music staff to kind of describe the students in adjectives or qualities that they share. And so, our music staff said that Sally is dedicated, passionate, humble, and obtains superior musicianship. Don't look so surprised. And I also asked the students, I don't know if you remember this, last month, to list your favorite fine arts memory. So, Sally's was one of my favorites. She said that her favorite fine arts memory is eating Costco cookies and band camp lunches during the winter. So, congratulations. Next, we have Alex Garcia. Alex was selected for the all-state chorus as a tenor. His involvement in fine arts has been through chamber choir, a cappella, BHS musicals, theater, and madrigals. Our music staff has described Alex as captivating to watch onstage, passionate, and an energetic performer. His favorite fine arts memory is participating in noteworthy a cappella all four years. Congratulations, Alex. Next, we have Ella Hildebrand, who's involved... Congratulations, Ella. Who was selected for our all-state honors chorus as an alto, and she's been involved in chamber choir. She's our BHS Choir Vice President. She's been involved in numerous a cappella groups and has been a featured jazz soloist. I've had a chance to watch her perform with Rhythm Machine. It's truly amazing. And her adjectives that our teachers described her is hardworking, a strong leader, reliable, a captivating performer, and having excellent overall musicianship. Her favorite fine arts memory is a competition with overtones a cappella last year, and she said it was so much fun being able to show her hard work and listening to many other groups from the area. Congratulations, Ella. Next, we recognize Faith John for All-State Honors Orchestra, violin one. Faith is involved in our chamber orchestra, our symphony orchestra, our chamber choir, BHS madrigals, and our a cappella groups. Our teachers described her as saying she has a combination of exacting technique with deep musicality. She's high achieving in both instrumental and vocal music. And her favorite fine arts memory is all the friendships that she's made through all those different groups that we just listed, and we feel so lucky to have her in our program. Congratulations, Faith. Next, we have Eli Lee for All-State Honors Chorus, tenor one. Eli's involved in chamber choir, a cappella, plays and musicals, madrigals, and is described by our teachers as passionate, dedicated, and a triple threat, which in musical theater means that you're a great dancer, you're a great vocalist, you're a great actor, and I can attest to that. I think Eli's like a total light up on stage and just so much fun to watch. And Eli's favorite memory is that after a madrigals performance, we visited the sock monkey store and I got a hat. Do you still have that hat? Do you still have it? Yeah. Come show it to me. Next, we celebrate Daniel McCoppin. And this one's pretty cool. He is, I think, only the second student we've had from Barrington selected for a Future Music Educator Award, going through a rigorous audition-interview process, and I think Daniel would be a great teacher. And his involvement in fine arts has been chamber choir, string orchestra, a cappellas, madrigals, choir board secretary, and I've really enjoyed working with him as part of the Fine Arts Leadership Board. His adjectives his teachers used to describe him are kind, generous, dedicated, and compassionate. And his favorite memory was when the chamber choir performed at IMEC and singing Luminaire last year, as well as the sensory-friendly concert, which was actually something that I loved working with Daniel on. It was an idea that music's for everybody and we should celebrate everyone in music. And that picture on the left up there is Daniel, who was one of our key organizers, performers, and he's there with his brother. And I love that you chose that picture to share. Congratulations, Daniel. Next, we have Mel Miller for the Composition Track Awards. Congratulations. So, this is actually really cool. The students who are selected for this award compose their own pieces of music. I had a chance to listen to Mel's piece earlier this week. It was fabulous, and we're so excited to recognize Mel. So, Mel's involvement has been through symphonic band, symphonic orchestra, marching broncos, rhythm machine, pep band, and some adjectives to describe Mel are creative, dedicated, mindful, and extremely hard-working. And I love the memory. So, for the memory, Mel wrote, "My favorite fine arts memory was getting to play in Winterfest with Rhythm Machine after watching them play in middle school."
Aww.
And, you know, I just think about like the place-to-be hashtag this year and the idea that, like, in our unit district, that students see something, they're able to be a part of it later, and, you know, that K-12 event, that I loved. So, congratulations. Next, we have Vanessa N'Giam for All-State Honors Orchestra, violin two. So, Vanessa has been involved in fine arts through chamber orchestra, symphony orchestra, and ensemble club. She's described by our music staff as passionate, joyful, and very dedicated to always achieving excellence as a musician. Her favorite fine arts memory is spending time with other musicians in our arts community. And then our last high school student tonight is Grayson Sytes, who's being recognized for All-State Honors Chorus for baritone. And Grayson's highly involved in our fine arts program through chamber choir, musicals and plays, a cappella, and visual arts. Our staff describes Grayson as intellectual, driven, passionate, and a multi-talented musician and visual artist. And I do think that's so cool, 'cause Grayson's visual arts are just stunning and amazing as well as the performances. And then, lastly, the favorite fine arts memory is singing Helplessness Blues sophomore year with the 10 a cappella seniors. So, congratulations, Grayson. So, those are our nine high school students who we're awarding. If we go to the next picture, I just wanna thank Jeff Dolez for doing this beautiful photo shoot with our students and taking so many pictures throughout the district to celebrate what students and teachers do. And then, I'm really excited tonight to introduce our first-ever middle school all-state musicians. So, the ILMEA, the Illinois Music Educators Association, it's always been just for high school at the state level, but they're piloting this year a junior chorus, which will expand to instrumental music possibly next year. And we had two students from Prairie Middle School who were able to be selected for the all-state junior chorus. So, we'd like to recognize Logan Ford and Noreen Haack. So, these students' musical skills and dedication to music are just so impressive, and we're excited to watch the development of those choral skills for the rest of their middle school journey. I think we have one in 7th grade, one in 8th grade, am I right? And beyond, continuing on at BHS. So, congratulations, students. And then, just lastly, I have the real privilege of seeing students and teachers work from kindergarten all the way through high school, and we achieve this excellence, our students do, but that certainly is under the guidance of our teachers, all the way, beginning in kindergarten through high school. And so, I'd be remiss not to recognize all of your music educators from early on to now, and then we're fortunate enough to have five of the teachers who've worked with this group the most closely. We have a little gift for them, too, from Ms. Burkoltz in the back. So, I'd love to recognize our three high school teachers. So, we've got Mr. Krivisik for band. Mr. Sheldon for orchestra. Mr. Pemberton for high school chorus. And then, Ms. Durham from Prairie Choir, and then Mr. Cook here, who works... Come on up. Who works with our station choir and also with our high school students. So, just a big round of applause for them, and thank you again to the board for all of your support. Congratulations.
Yep, alright. Do we wanna do a photo? Could we do... think we can fit our board members in?
We're in the back.
If we maybe get tight, it's a large group, which is the best news ever that it's so many students. But do you think if we try to squish together, could we do it?
We can stay in the back, right?
Yeah, alright, let's try.
Stay where we are, is that what...
Should we squeeze a little bit?
Renee, do you want us to come into the side or send them that? Go in here?
We need to come in?
Come on out.
Okay, come out. Don't run away after the photo.
Alright, how about one more round of applause?
There's still more fun to come. There's still more fun to come.
Yeah.
So, feel free to move around if you need to. Now's the time.
Places to sit in front. Don't be afraid to come to the front.
Okay, so we're gonna go from accomplished and impressive students to outstanding and talented educators. So, we're doing both types of recognitions tonight. I'd like to turn it over to Jordan Anderson, who's going to introduce our National Board Certified Staff.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, everyone. It's so great to be here tonight. My name is Jordan Anderson. I am Director of Learning Services here for Barrington 220 School District. I have the distinct privilege here of working with so many groups of talented educators that I could go on and on about all evening, but for tonight, we are here to recognize a wonderful group of staff who have worked so hard to achieve National Board certification. It is not lost on any of us in this room what incredible talent and dedication it takes to achieve National Board recognition. We have five staff members here with us tonight, and when we think about our statement of empowering personal excellence in every learner, these teachers have done it all. They've worked with students, they are so dedicated, and have put so much time into this. So, we have four teachers tonight who have completed their renewal of their certification, and we have one brand-new certification as well. I also would love to recognize... we have Carrie Waxler and Heidi Rockwell here tonight, two of our amazing teachers who actually work with this group as they go through this certification process. So, I'm actually going to turn it over to them. They are going to explain more about the process, how this works, and recognize all of our staff individually. So, thank you again.
Hi, everybody. My name's Carrie Waxler. I'm one of the social studies teachers at the high school. I teach the AP Government classes here. My friend and colleague, Heidi Rockwell, who teaches English and social studies classes at the high school. We're honored to be here tonight to represent the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards community here in District 220. National Board certification is among the most rigorous and research-based processes any professional educator can undertake. The initial certification consists of completing four separate modules. Each requires the candidate to display a different area of expertise, both in their content knowledge as well as in their pedagogical... as well as in their pedagogical experience. Uh, maintaining your certification happens every five years. It requires teachers to demonstrate data-based student growth, uh, professional development, as well as dedication to not only your students, but also to the profession in general. Uh, the relative rarity of the certification is a testament to the rigor of what it takes to get it. Less than 3% of all American teachers, uh, have National Board Certification. Uh, the results of the certification are clear. In research done in Washington and Illinois and Florida respectively and independently, National Board Certified Teachers produce student gains equivalent to one and a half additional months of instruction for their students. Uh, the equivalent gains cut across the different locales, certification areas, contents, and the assessment methods. The common thread throughout all of the 20-plus certification, uh, areas are what we call the core propositions. This is that National Board Certified Teachers know the subjects that they teach, they know how to teach those subjects, they know the students in their classroom, they know how to measure student learning, and they know how to respond to that data appropriately. Barrington 220 has built a solid community of 40 National Board Certified Teachers, which is a testament to both the Board, the administration, and the teaching communities', uh, dedication to this process. It's my honor to work with, uh, these outstanding educators that choose to practice their craft in District 220. Uh, we'd like to briefly introduce each one of the five, uh, that either attained initial or, uh, maintenance of certification, and then turn it over to you for any questions, uh, that you have. Uh, so we'd like to start with Liz Burt. Uh, her certification area is middle to early childhood arts education. Um, Liz said that going through the National Board process was both intense and transformative. Working alongside my inspiring colleagues deepened my appreciation for my profession, and the process pushed me beyond simply teaching the standards, challenging me to be intentional in how I deliver instruction based on my continual observations and reflections of each student's strengths, interests, and needs. It also gave me the confidence to trust my instincts in the moment, meeting students where they are, and inviting them to join me on a journey of exploration and growth. Please join me in, uh, celebrating Liz. Next, we have Allison Hudson. Uh, Allison Hudson is certified in English as a New Language Early and Middle Childhood Specialist. Uh, Allison said, as part of the National Board, uh, "The journey encouraged me to recognize and respect the diverse backgrounds, learning styles, and needs of my students. This has made me feel more intentional in creating inclusive and equitable learning environments where all students feel valued and supported." Congratulations, Allison. Next up is Paula Levin. Uh, Paula is certified in English Language Arts Adolescent and Young Adulthood. Paula said about the process, uh, that, uh, maintaining my National Board Certification encouraged me to reflect on my instructional methods, assess student needs more effectively, and help me foster a more inclusive and engaging environment for my students. Ultimately, the certification has boosted my confidence as an educator, helping me create more meaningful experiences, uh, for learning in my classroom. Congratulations, Paula. Uh, next is our initial certificate, Maricela Mendez. Uh, Maricela is certified as a generalist in early childhood. Uh, she said, "The National Board Certification is a commitment to continuous growth, both for me as an educator as well as my students as learners. It challenged me to reflect, refine, and elevate my teaching craft, ensuring I provide the best educational environment possible for my students and their families." Congratulations, Maricela. Last, we have Michelle Weiss, uh, who is, uh, did her maintenance of certification as a middle child generalist. Uh, Michelle said that she appreciated going through the National Board process. It centers around the five core principles that effective teachers are deeply committed to student learning, possess thorough subject matter knowledge, actively manage and monitor student progress, reflect critically on their practice, and actively participate in learning communities. Going through the initial certification process in 2014 and maintenance of certification process in 2024 last year, with these core principles in mind, has had a lasting impact on my teaching practices and on my students. Congratulations, Michelle.
We want to, um, say thank you to the Board for supporting us as we, um, go through these and we help, uh, the teachers. It is such a privilege to work with the staff. And I get to peek in, Carrie and I get to peek into their classrooms. We get to peek into the work that they do, and it's incredible. It's inspiring. And one of the things that we say repeatedly when we are working with teachers, um, the National Board process is individualized as individualized gets because every teacher has to look at a student and say, "Who is that student? What do they need? And how can I adjust my craft and my teaching to meet the needs of that student?" It's a daunting task, but it is a privilege to do so. And thank you so much for your support of the work that we do, and thank you for, um, uh, allowing us to be here to celebrate these wonderful teachers. Thank you.
So are there any questions or anything from the Board?
As I recall, this is a, it's a year-long process for both initial certification and the recertification. And, and how do the assessments work? And also, congratulations. That's awesome.
So I think it's a little bit different now because they changed the process since my initial certification, but, uh, we had four modules with four portfolios. And then you have a really long exam where you get case studies, and you have to think on your feet and think, you know, I remember getting one that was, um, a music educator, fifth or fifth grade, have to integrate music education as well with the social studies concept. And it was like, I don't teach fifth grade and I don't teach music, but let's, you know, figure out what, you know, and so it's thinking on your feet. It's coming up with creative ways to meet all students' needs and at all kind of all levels. So that was my experience anyway.
Were there any lightbulb moments, like, oh my goodness, I could do this cool thing with my students that I hadn't done before? Maybe that's too hard. Or just special things that came up that you were like, wow, this is good.
Really, the thing that was so meaningful to me the first time with the initial process was just being in the cohort. It was amazing to, I had an amazing cohort, you know, I had an amazing group of people that I was working with, and it was so inspiring to see what they were doing in their classrooms. And it made me really proud to be a 220 teacher.
I have to speak on behalf of Liz as well. It's in the process, teachers coming into this process think, okay, I'm going to prove I'm a really good teacher. And the process exposes, um, your, your instructional design. It exposes your thinking. And, um, it allows you then to, um, affirm the work that you're doing while also, um, challenging your perceptions of what you're doing. And so it is the most vulnerable process. And to open up your classroom to somebody else takes a lot of courage. Um, you're used to it with your students because they're, they're your students. You, you're there for them. But to open it up to a colleague is altogether very different. And so to be in the classroom with these, um, incredible educators and to see the work that they're doing and those lightbulb moments that you asked about, um, they come all the time. And what we will say is, once you go through the process, and some of us had to go through it multiple times in, in order to, um, achieve it, um, and then you go through the MOC, you have acquired the National Board mindset, which is, why am I doing this? How do I know it's effective? And, and what are the results for that? And how can I change? What do I do? And it comes every hour. What do I need? Okay, I'm going to adjust. So all of these educators have proven, um, proven that. And because the National Board process is so rigorous. So thank you again.
Just very impressive. Thank you so much. And, uh, thank you, Mr. Waxler and Ms. Rockwell also for, for guiding, um, and supporting these teachers as well. It's very, very impressive. And I'm, I'm sure the kids can see the difference too. So appreciate that.
Yes. And thank you again to Dr. Winkelman and the Board for your support of National Boards, and congratulations to all of you.
It's up to you. You should take it.
Yeah, one more photo.
Don't leave. Don't run away. Why is the staff always more reluctant than the students?
We get in the back still. impressed by all the talent demonstrated this evening with all the students and the staff. And, um, in honor of Mighty Maisy and the Roslin Road Friday Show, all expressing a variety of ways, um, that we demonstrate empowering personal excellence in every learner here in Barrington 220. Um, Board, the, uh, just as a quick reminder from the last meeting, um, the BADC invited us, encouraged us to do CPR training. And, um, Brigitte Haroff has graciously agreed to teach the Board, um, the hands-on portion of CPR. So look for an email, and I'll be coordinating a, a date for us to get together to do that. Okay? Um, also today, just today, I received a letter from the IASB, um, congratulating us, um, and recognizing us that we are one of 46, um, school boards to earn the Illinois Association of School Boards Board of Excellence Recognition Designation, which we talked about a few, few meetings ago. And we are invited and encouraged to attend the Lake Division Meeting, which is going to be on March 12th, which is a conflict to another invite that we have as well. Um, so, please, Janine, I'm assuming we can get with you to, um, get registered for that dinner, um, where we, again, uh, one of 46 districts' school boards across the state that will be recognized. Um, and then I wanted just to mention the place to be this week, and, and they're all gone. They can't even hear me, but it is February, so it is high school musical time. So I'm going to say the place to be is the High School Musical. We're doing Chicago the weekend of, I wrote it down here somewhere, February 20th through 23rd. So don't miss that opportunity, um, to see that. Um, and then last Board, we've got a couple of people signed up for public comment, and I think that Dr. Winkelman is going to address some of these things in his, um, report this, this evening. Is it okay if we switch the order and we turn it over to Dr. Winkelman now before public comment, and then we'll do public comment following?
Perfect.
All right, let's do that. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Sandra. All right. So, um, February is, there's a School Resource Officer Appreciation Day on February 15th, and our district employs, uh, three full-time, uh, school resource officers that are here this evening that we'd like to express our gratitude, uh, for working with us and our students. We have Officer Guyton, who is a school resource officer at Barrington High School. We should applaud. Yeah. And then we have, um, officers at both of our two middle school campuses. So, uh, also joining us tonight is Officer Russinos, who is our school resource officer at Prairie. Um, Officer Serencioni, I always have to take my time to say that name, um, is out on leave presently, um, but she is returning, uh, next week to Station Campus. Um, and we certainly appreciate all that Officer Serencioni, uh, provides. But I also want to do a special shout out to Officer Grunthal, who has been filling in, uh, during her leave. Also here tonight, I do want to thank Chief Daigle and Deputy Chief Alstat for your leadership of the department. Um, you know, our resource officers, uh, they certainly do, uh, enhance the safety and security, um, at our campuses, but they do much more than that. Um, they're called school resource officers, uh, very intentionally, um, because they do, they do serve as a resource, um, to our students and to our staff and our community, um, in their roles at, um, our secondary campuses. And we certainly appreciate them being, um, available for all types of questions and just being good role models, uh, as well for our students. And so I think, um, we're very fortunate, uh, to have, uh, our officers in place in the relationship that we have between the school district and, uh, the Barrington Police Department. So thank you for all of, uh, your service to our community.
Thank you.
And we like to talk a lot. Do our officers want to share anything about your experiences or anything with the Board of Education?
No, we're just thankful to be part of the district and helping you guys out. So we love working with the kids in this meeting. We're enjoying everything.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. And then, um, continuing my report, I want to spend a little bit of time, um, thank you, um, providing a kindergarten update. In my report at our last meeting, I mentioned, um, that we are at that time of year where we're starting to welcome, um, our new incoming kindergarten families. And, um, we do that annually, the first week of February with our kindergarten roundup. Uh, we held those events last night at all eight of our elementaries. And Steve, I know you were at, at Roslin, and we had a wonderful turnout, um, across all of our elementary schools. Um, at our last meeting, I also answered a question, um, I think, Dr. Altshuler, you may have mentioned about just the kindergarten placement process in addition, uh, to the roundup event. Um, because we were starting to receive some inquiries, uh, from parents about the placement process. And so, uh, tonight I thought, I really want to take some time. I've got a few slides prepared. I think it's important conversation for our Board to understand our process as well as for our community. So we can go to the next slide. So I'm going to start with, um, you know, our school district, like other school districts across Illinois, um, is guided by policies. And so one of those policies is Policy 750, which is school admissions and student transfers to and from non-district schools. This policy has been in place since 2003. Uh, the first paragraph of this policy outlines the age eligibility for students to enter kindergarten and first grade. Revisions have occurred since 2003, um, but over the past 20 years, that portion of the policy has remained the same. It has not changed. Um, you'll also note that this policy, uh, towards the end of the screenshot I provided there, it does reference an accelerated placement for students. And we can go to the next slide. Um, we have a separate policy that speaks to accelerated placement programs across the district and how students may be eligible or enter those programs. And as you can see, um, there is a provision for students that are seeking early entrance into kindergarten, uh, as, in first grade as well. And then there's a third policy that really speaks to our placement process. And this is 730, um, student assignment. Um, this policy really addresses, you know, how do we place students? Whether that starts out very broadly where the policy talks about, the district is divided into attendance centers, and that helps us organize our students by school location, and talks about transfers within the district. And then it's very clear, um, that the superintendent or designee assigns students to classes, right? So there's been some conversations occurring about what are the policies in the district? Um, and, and there's also been some conversations about have the policies changed? Um, so I thought it was worth just spending a minute really talking about the policies, um, explaining the policies and reinforcing, our policies have not changed. Um, the policies have been in place for a number of years, and they have not changed. Um, so, next slide. So if the policy has not changed, why is this topic being discussed in our community? And so, um, the Board, uh, and myself, we have received email messages from some parents, uh, over the last few weeks regarding kindergarten placement. Um, we've become aware that there is some communication on this topic circulating online, um, within parent groups. And so as a result, I've spent the last few weeks since our last meeting really gathering information to try to have a better understanding, um, of the situation in order to try to find resolution, uh, to the concerns that have been, uh, presented. So, um, I've learned a lot. I've, I've, I promise I've really dug into this. And, and there are a variety of reasons, I think, of why, uh, this is being widely discussed within our community. But probably the most significant is that the volume of requests, uh, for consideration They really need to be solved by the one-on-one individual conversations for us to be able to really understand the developmental needs. Our principals are highly skilled and qualified to have those conversations, really be able to explain our curriculum and so forth. And you know what? We also have, I think, some of the finest educators in kindergarten and first grade in the state. And our principals may bring some of our teachers into that conversation to meet with the child or observe the child and make sure we're getting that full picture of what is the appropriate placement for students that are seeking delayed entry, as well as, as I mentioned, we have a specific policy about parents that are considering or seeking eligibility for accelerated placement. And we've been doing this successfully for a number of years. We have a larger volume this year, and so we're working through that. I know that individuals, a couple of weeks ago, when I was responding to Dr. Altshuler and I had provided that perspective of, you know, reach out to your principal, over the last two weeks, we have had parents do that, and we have students right now that have been approved for a delayed entry because those critical conversations have taken place. We also decided to be a little bit more proactive. So our principals, rather than just waiting for parents to take us up on the, you know, advice, we've actually started calling parents. And so we're starting to work through that process. Next slide, Janine. But, you know, I think we've demonstrated that continuous improvement is what we're about here in Barrington 220. And I think we've learned some things about the kindergarten placement process and how we might be able to improve. So we don't have some of the misunderstandings or concerns that have come up this year in our community. A few examples of things that I think we have already recognized. We can update the website and improve the way that we're communicating about the importance of that process of reaching out, starting those conversations at the school level. We were hesitant to start changing things on the website right now because we were afraid that may really confuse everybody if we started doing updates. So I promise we're going to make updates to the website so that we have that forward-facing, right, transparent communication with our community that we always strive for. Another area that has emerged is, over the last two weeks, in addition to gathering information, I started reaching out to our preschool directors because they are a part of this conversation too. And a lot of the parents that reached out, you know, expressing concerns cited some of the conversations. And so I started reaching out to our preschool providers. And another way that I think we can improve in the future is, we're going to set up an opportunity late fall to invite all of our preschool directors into the district so that annually, we start to have conversations where we can share and provide what we're offering for our students and also learn and get an understanding from our preschool programs, what's going on, so that we, together, because we're all serving the same students in our community, we have that open dialogue and collaboration. And those are just two that I think have emerged. There's going to be more, and I promise the board will continue to keep you apprised of improvements and things that, and adjustments that we're making moving forward. So just, I know that was a little bit long, and it was a few more slides, but I wanted to take our time tonight to really just address some of the concerns that have come up and do a little bit better job to explain the process. All right, I have a couple more slides. My next slide is about, you may recall, earlier this fall, we had a presentation provided by Mr. Ernst, our Director of School Improvement, and he explained that of all the states across the nation, Illinois has one of the highest standards in terms of student achievement, right? You remember this conversation where we talked about, I think we're like, we have the fourth highest benchmark as far as students meeting? So the NAEP dubbed the Nation's Report Card is the only assessment that provides a common measure where now you can see what US students know across our nation, not just from a state level. It provides a unique snapshot of academic progress and a rare opportunity for comparing academic performance across states. And so the results of the NAEP assessment recently came out, and Illinois had the second highest eighth-grade reading performance in the nation. Again, I think this speaks to, when we talk about that Illinois has that high bar, when you start to look at scores that actually are concerning students across our country, we're doing very well, right? And Illinois had the fifth highest eighth-grade mathematics performance in the nation as well. And then, you know, I included a quote from our state superintendent, Dr. Sanders. So I wanted to share that. That's kind of that state and national perspective, but I wanted to also provide some updates to the board more locally here in Barrington. So my next slide, a couple pieces of information. You know, we annually provide assessments at different benchmark time periods throughout the year. We just did our winter assessments, which we administer the MAP and the FastBridge assessment. Again, our schools continue to achieve at high levels on our mid-year assessments. And then the second bullet there, you may recall, that same fall update that Mr. Ernst provided, we talked about the designations of our schools, and Sunny Hill in particular was one of the schools that was designated as targeted, meaning that there was recommendations for improvement. I want to share with the board and our community that Sunny Hill has shown considerable growth in mathematics, which has been a core area of focus this school year in our improvement efforts, especially when you're comparing growth from the prior year. So immediately, we started putting a number of supports, organizing the school differently, interventions in place to make sure that we're not spending one more day where we're needing to apply additional supports for the students there. And we immediately put those in place this year, even though many of the designation status occurs next year for that building. And we're already seeing really nice gains at that building. So I thought that was worth noting at this time of year. We'll give another update on performance later this spring when we've had a full year, but I wanted to give a mid-year update. And with that, that concludes my report for this evening, unless there's any questions from the board.
Questions?
I'll just say, thank you for doing that, because I know we've gotten quite a few emails, and I know many of us have done personal phone calls, so hopefully this clarifies, but thank you for doing it.
Yeah, of course.
Echoing the thanks, I do have a couple of questions, Dr. Winkelman. You said that we had a significantly higher number of families requesting a delay this year. Can you give us an idea of what we have typically gotten in terms of requests and roughly how many more this year so far? And I know we're not, we're still early February. And also, are we working, it sounds like we are, going and working with each individual family who thought that they could delay but are not sure now in going back? So could you kind of give us a little bit of insight into that?
So this year, I think we have less than five families that are in a situation where a placement was delayed for them. I think we have closer to 30 families right now.
Thirty?
Yes, where they either fall into the category of their child would be first-grade eligible, but they chose to not enroll them in kindergarten this year, and they're seeking a kindergarten placement for next year. So of the 30, some families fall into that category. And then there's another group that their child would be eligible for kindergarten, but they're considering delaying and not for next year, they would send them in a year from now. So it's approximately 30 that fall into one of those two scenarios. Our principals, I had another meeting yesterday and then one this afternoon just before our meeting tonight. Those families that fall in the category of they've already delayed, all of those phone calls have occurred in placement decisions based on those critical conversations to really understand, you know, what needs exist, the request, as well as us having an opportunity to share how we might be able to meet those needs. All of those conversations with that first group have occurred.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Because I know that, I was the recipient, I think also other board members, of some panic, like, oh, my child is to go straight from preschool to first grade. And I know that some of, I've gotten some feedback that those conversations have started happening, so thank you very much.
And kudos to our principals, because they're the ones that I had asked. I said, you know, rather than waiting, can we be proactive? And they did a great job of immediately reaching out, connecting with those families that had not connected with them previously.
And I think that messaging too, with the preschool, our surrounding preschools in the fall, I think that change will be really important too, given the increase. And can you also address, we had a, you know, I know that our Policy 750 talks about, when you read it, you see the minimum ages. Can you talk about why we don't currently have a maximum cap on, you know, that would address the delay? And I believe it's more, and I think that's maybe where some of the confusion came from, but I also think we've been intentional in not having a maximum cap?
Yeah, yeah, great question. So 750 really speaks to eligibility. This is where that conversation starts, because your child is eligible for placement in either kindergarten or first grade based on their age. Putting caps or putting further definitions, to me, it could be beneficial, but it could also be detrimental. Because I think having the policy the way that it is, that it allows us to make those decisions that are student-centered, because you could impose a cap or change the wording and stuff, and then you discover you have a child that doesn't fit that dynamic, but now you have a policy that says you can't do that because we're going, policies guide the district, right? Policies is what we adhere to. The way that it's written right now, it allows us to start the conversation, it's very clear of when kids are eligible, but then we're allowed to have those conversations one-on-one and then make a decision that's very student-centered.
Right, thank you. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Just from like a class size perspective, because I think that's number is even larger than I thought it was. And I'm not saying everyone is going to be where we thought, I mean, is it spread throughout the district? Or is, can you foresee perhaps a problem, an issue at a school?
I, to answer your question, it is definitely spread across the district, right? It's not like it's all concentrated in one building. And like I said, those are, there's families that are in both of those, so some we may receive this year, some we may receive a year from now. So, yeah, I don't, I don't foresee any concerns with just staffing or sections because of this, especially given the nature of where they're, where they're located.
You're referring to the 30 number, right?
Yeah, yeah, when I thought about, there's really two cohorts, right?
The 30, yeah, to be clear, the 30 is both.
It makes it feel a lot better.
Yeah, yeah, it's not all 30 for next year. It's 30 that are either seeking it now or a year from now.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it'll be spread out over the two years.
Thank you. I just wanted to just thank you too for reaching out to the preschools, because I think one of the things that this org's done so well is we moved so fast and implemented our full-day kindergarten, right? It'll be in our second year in the fall, and I think that hindsight's 20-20, but I think it'd be good to have those more in-depth conversations with those entities going forward. It's great, really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
If I could just put on my doctor hat for a minute, speak to the parents. As Dr. Winkelman has said, every child is different, but I just want to caution parents not to just look at birth dates, because there are very mature kids who are late August birthdays, and there are some very immature kids who have winter birthdays who might need a little more time and a little more help and a little more support from our district. I encourage parents who are concerned to also use your pediatrician as, or your family practice doctor, as a resource, because they can also give you some good advice. But just be real cautious that just because your neighbor's keeping their kid back doesn't mean you need to be pressured to keep your child back, because you may have an advanced child who's just ready to go, and you'd hate to waste a year when they could really, you know, get into the education system when they should be getting into the education system. So I just want to be careful, you know? Don't compare neighbors, because everybody is different, everyone has a different story, and our administration will support you. Talk to the principals and, you know, really use the resources you have. So, but I thank you for, you know, all the hard work you've had to do the last week or two to combat some of the social media hysteria that's been there. And then I have a request for a future superintendent's report. Could we look at attendance, now that we have a new administration and there's a certain population of students who might be afraid to come to school? I'm just wondering if it's really affecting our attendance. So, you know, over the next, you know, weeks or, you know, three, four weeks, I'm just interested whether we're seeing an effect if, you know, after January 20th, suddenly things change with a certain population of our students.
Yeah, so I'll answer it in general. We were watching it before, and we've been watching it carefully after. I can do that next, in my next superintendent report, just to give an update that's more specific, you know, as to what's really happening in our schools. I know that the conversations have, they were occurring, right, and then they've continued. We continue to reinforce a message of, you know, not choosing to stay out of school, to attend school and so forth. But I'll be able to get more specifics if we've seen any changes in attendance.
I'm just interested.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I haven't heard that we have, but I think it'd be good for the board to have that information as well.
Thank you.
I just want to say one more thing on kindergarten again, like, in my, my experience with the, with the District 2, even if you make a decision and you find that maybe that wasn't the right decision, go ahead and have that conversation with your principal too. I've seen, you know, students move based upon their skills and what they're able to do. So know that that's a possibility too. That's not a hard decision on
Good point.
August, middle of August, but, or whatever, February.
Right.
Make sure you continue to have that conversation and watch your child.
Yep. And that was one of the things, it's a great point. One of the things that, you know, I learned from the directors as well, is that, you know, a lot of growth continues. I mean, we're, we are talking about it because we're doing our roundup, there's things going on, but the directors really reinforced, there's a tremendous amount of growth that happens, you know, over the next several months, because that continues. And so yes, it is a dynamic process. So even if you have the conversation now with your principal and you get an update on progress and so forth from the preschool, or you're wondering, reach out again to your principal, even when they're with us next fall, and then we have a chance to actually work with students directly with, you know, our outstanding staff, then yes, we still look to see, is this the best placement? Is the child going to derive the best learning? And so we can adjust even during the school year, so great point. Yeah.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, no more questions? All right, then I'm going to go back to public comment. So we've come to the time in our meeting, set aside for public comment, and the board values their thoughts and opinions. We ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with our Board Equity Statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. The board has agreed to the rules set forth in our policy and which the public commentators have agreed to as they have signed up. I'll remind everyone that this is a board meeting that occurs in public, it's not a public meeting, that public comment is not a conversation, and it does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. And if any comments require further attention, then we will ask Dr. Winkelman to follow-up and report back to the board. All right, so with that, Kylie Humbert.
Hi, guys. What a great night. It's amazing to always see our awesome educators and hear about all the awesome things that they're doing, and our students are always so impressive. And thank you guys for being here again. I recognize how much work this community is, especially myself. Okay, I'm going to go quick and read because time is brief here. Good evening, members of the school board, parents, teachers, and community members. I stand before you, or sit rather. I stand here tonight, not just as a parent advocate, but as a voice for students who've been quietly erased from our district with the sudden cancellation of the Special Education SAS program, which supports students with an emotional disability. These are kids who've already been labeled, set apart, and too often told they don't belong, and now with this decision, we're telling them once again that their struggles make them unworthy of being part of our school community. The statistics for outplacement speak themselves. A study from the National Association of Special Education Teachers found that 70% So, we've come to the time in our meeting set aside for public comment. And the board values their thoughts and opinions. We ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with our board equity statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. The board has agreed to the rules set forth in our policy and which the public commentators have agreed to as they have signed up. I'll remind everyone that this is a board meeting that occurs in public. It's not a public meeting. That public comment is not a conversation, and it does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. And if any comments require further attention, then we will ask Dr. Winkelman to follow up and report back to the board. All right? So, with that, Kylie Humbert.
Hi, guys. What a great night. It's amazing to always see our awesome educators and hear about all the awesome things that they're doing. And our students are always so impressive. And thank you guys for being here again. I recognize how much work this community is, especially myself. Okay, I'm going to go quick and read, because time is brief here. Good evening, members of the school board, parents, teachers, and community members. I stand before you, or sit, rather. I stand here tonight, not just as a parent advocate, but as a voice for students who've been quietly erased from our district with the sudden cancellation of the special education SAS program, which supports students with an emotional disability. These are kids who've already been labeled, set apart, and too often told they don't belong. And now with this decision, we're telling them once again that their struggles make them unworthy of being part of our school community. The statistics for outplacement speak themselves. A study from the National Association of Special Education Teachers found that 70% of students with emotional disabilities and outplacements fail to graduate from high school. Students placed in outplacement programs outside of district are twice as likely to be involved in juvenile detention centers, and the cost of outplacement is significantly higher on average districts pay, sometimes three to four times the amount that they would have in district. I'd like anyone at home listening to understand why our district website, it says specifically allocate taxpayer dollars to another objects line item. On the website, it says D220 publicly reports 8.3% of our budget going to outplacement. It says it right on the website. District actuals were consistently around $4 million for years, and now they're at seven. Sorry, I'm trying to go quick. Ah! But beyond the financial cost, let's talk about the human cost, because I think sometimes we forget that when we're running an organization. What message does it send to families? What does it send to the kids? That they're not welcome here? That they're too much? If 11% of our student population with an ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder Diagnosis, is outplaced, which they are, how does it make those families feel? And that is cited from ISB's report card. The district administration proved that they can make changes to any programming with any label without a lot of you board members understanding pretty quickly, and I'd like to see that change. 20%, roughly, 18 to 20% every year, kids with IEPs exist in 220. Out of our, call it 8,000 kids, we have, I don't know, 1,500 IEPs. So, we need to be paying attention to this population. We must be careful. When we start labeling certain kids as too much and removing them from our own community, we're continuing a dangerous legacy of exclusion. These students don't need labels. They don't need to be marked as different. They need schools that embrace them as they are, and we bring them in, not push them out. I urge you to reconsider disbanding the SAS program. Instead of pushing them away, again, let's bring them closer. Let's not cut funding. Let's invest in these kids and these families who need it most. And if we remove support, we remove opportunity. And when we remove opportunity, we remove hope. And just because it might not be illegal doesn't make it unethical.
Thank you, Kylie. Thank you.
Thank you.
So close. Marcia McClary?
Hello, I'm Marcia McClary. Thanks for having me, and thank you so much for everything. And thank you to our security guards in high school and everything they do. It's a lot. So, I wanted to speak to one of the executive orders that was issued in the last two weeks that affects the school systems dramatically. It's the Ending Radical Indoctrination in K through 12 schooling. So, Section 3 says, "Within 90 days of the date of the order, advise the president in formulating future policies, Secretary of Education, Defense, and Human Services, in consultation with Attorney General, shall provide an ending indoctrination strategy to the president, and containing recommendations and plan for eliminating federal funding or support for illegal and discriminatory treatment and indoctrination in K through 12 schools, including based on gender ideology and discriminatory equity ideology." That being said, I, my interest is to maintain our funding, because we obviously have a lot of funding going on, referendum that was just approved, all these things. So, with that 90 days in mind, there is a policy, and there might be other things that I'm not aware of, that I would suggest we take a look at. This is Policy 710. Equal Educational Opportunities, the sex equity section says, "No student shall, based on sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, be denied equal access to program, activities, services, or benefits, or be limited in excuse of any right, privilege, advantage, or deny equal educational and extracurricular programs and activities. Students shall be supported in a manner consistent with their gender identity. This will include, but not be limited to, use of restrooms, locker rooms, and other facilities that correspond with the student's gender identity." That being said, I appreciate that you already announced going back to the previous Title IX regulations, given that that has changed. But now I believe that in addition to this executive order, as well as the Title IX, going back to what it was previously, I believe that this policy in particular, and there might be others as well, is in conflict. Meaning that if, I don't just say it could go either way, but if a girl goes into the boys restroom or locker room, and there's a boy in there that says that day they're a girl, or vice versa, I think there could be a situation. And as well as looking at curriculum and other things we have, whether it's surveys, things that talk about, you know, using other facilities that might not identify with your God-given sex. I think those are things that could put us in a bit of a financial situation with the federal government. So, I wanted to bring that up to your attention today, and I appreciate you taking the opportunity. Thanks.
Thanks, Marcia.
Thank you.
Next up, I apologize, Phil K. Kamer?
Yeah.
I can't read it.
Oh, sorry.
I'll let you introduce yourself.
I type everything at work.
I do too.
Okay. I appreciate the recent statements regarding the kindergarten age requirement. However, the fact that multiple sources, including parents and community members, were unaware of this policy adjustment doubts whether it was communicated properly. Over the past several weeks, the messaging from school officials on this policy has shifted, creating further confusion. Many parents did not realize they might not be able to delay their children's entry into kindergarten, and the policy appears to be enforced differently this year due to the number of potential students. Learning about the change late in the process left families with little time to adjust, and some even missed kindergarten roundup. The lack of transparency is especially concerning, because it impacts young students at a critical stage in their education. For students with birthdays near September 1st cutoff, this policy could shape their next 13 years in the school. I want to say that we all take great pride in District 2020 and share commitment to the well-being of the many students who pass through our excellent schools. To ensure the best outcomes for all students, it's critical that the school board, administration, and parents obtain, maintain open lines of communication. Major policy changes should never be implemented or potential enforcement changed without open discussion and also communicated properly. Moving forward, I urge the school board and administration to establish a more structured and transparent process for policy changes or enforcement, one that allows for community input and ensures parents are properly informed. By working together, we can ensure every family in District 2020 has the information they need to support their child's education and future successes. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
All right, so, three, and that concludes our public comment. There's three folks that came forward with some meaty topics. I just wanted one clarification maybe before we, like, the elimination of the SAS program does not, it's not an automatic that the students that were involved in that will go to an alternate setting. Is that correct?
Yeah. It's a great clarifying question. No. So, any decisions that are connected to a student in the SAS program, that will be decided at the IEP table, so that the parents and our staff have an opportunity to discuss the needs of the student, and then determine placement. So, it's not an automatic. Changing the way that we deliver services to our students, whether it's through a SAS program or other programming that we have in place, those decisions are always generated at the IEP table. So, yes, great clarification.
Yeah. And I guess just one more thing. I think each speaker had talked about individual students and their, and their situations. We just spent, what, I don't know, 10, 15 minutes in your report, talking about how we are treating kindergarteners individually. I want to just make sure that we make the statement that we're going to do the same with all the other kinds of students that were mentioned in the parent, in the public comment.
Yeah. I think that's what, one of the things that makes 220 great is that we really do start with students and make our decisions based on students, and starting there, I think, is the right thing. I will follow up with the speakers tonight on all three of these topics as well.
Excellent.
Because it's hard to do in a, in a board meeting setting, but I
Right.
absolutely will follow up. Appreciate it.
Sure.
I think there's an impression in the community that if you aren't in, if you were in the SAS program, and now the SAS program doesn't exist, you have the choice of being in the mainstream classroom or being outplaced. And I don't think that's true, but how do you address that? There's other options that will still be available, right?
Yeah. I've, thanks for bringing that back up. Yes. So, we have a variety of programs to meet our needs of our students in special education programs. The SAS program is one of those opportunities. There are others. So, it's not, just like Sandra was saying, it's not an automatic that you're in a therapeutic day school. It's not also an automatic that you're in SAS and then, oops, excuse me, that you go right back to mainstream. We have other service delivery models that exist in our schools, and we will have those conversations about those opportunities during that IEP meeting with the parents.
Can you give an example, Dr.?
I just want to be careful, because this is not a discussion topic too.
Okay.
I just want to be careful that we don't go.
Sure. Here's why I'm hesitant to go in the weeds, because I don't want anyone to interpret that we're making decisions about students' placement now. That happens in that IEP meeting. And so, yes, we have a resource model that we can serve students through. We have academic instructional models. We have other social-emotional models that exist throughout the district. I'm just hesitant that if I say one, that people are going to gravitate towards, that's the one that students are going. I am not going to do that. We will decide those on a case-by-case basis during an IEP meeting with parents and review what is the best placement for students to derive their benefit in the least restrictive environment.
Okay. All right, let's move on to our informational reports. Any questions or comments from the board? All right, board committee reports.
Have we had any?
Yes, PTO presidents council met. It was a very productive meeting. I think it was also evidence of why it's so important to have the PTO presidents from our various schools get together and share experiences. The elementary presidents this time were very patient, because there's a very robust discussion between, like, high schools. So, high school, BHS, Prairie and Station, around how can we best serve our rising eighth graders when it comes to, when it comes to transitioning? Because the, I think this year, eighth graders had to register in November for their classes. And so, a lot of parents were taken by surprise. And I think we were discussing, you know, things that have worked in the past that have been helpful, maybe bringing some of that back in terms of inform, maybe melding a, you know, melding the career fair that middle school students get to attend at the high school with potential, like, a lens or preview into, into what's available. Because our offerings are so robust, it's almost like a college course catalog at BHS. So, just maybe some more helpful ways to, for eighth graders especially, and their families to navigate. And so, I think there was a lot of discussion around that. So, so that centered onto, or that took up much of the meeting. So, but I think it dovetailed really well with our focus on transitions this year as well. So, it's definitely something I think we're committed to, to looking at, and the administration wants to improve on as well. So. Oh, and also one thing from the EdRed dinner that we had, that was last Monday, and just really briefly, we had a representative from AASA, which is the organization that, that represents this superintendence at public schools around the country, Noel Ellerson Ng. She came, and she's actually one of the assistant executive directors who does congressional advocacy. So, she gave us a preview of what kind of legislation might be coming up nationally that could affect schools, Supreme Court rulings, a whole variety of stuff around IDA grants. And so, our EdRed executive director, Bridget Peach, promised to have that slideshow available for us. So, for all of you who couldn't attend, I thought it was super informative. It was being hit with a lot all at once. So, I think that once that's available, I can also check on it and see if I could send it to you, Sandra, and you could send it out.
That'd be great.
If you could send it out. I tried to access it through her site.
You weren't able to? Okay.
I tried to see that.
Yeah. She did promise that she would be able to send it out to us or have it available.
Can you just put it in your superintendent's report?
Superintendent Weekly.
Sure.
Take one thing off of my list.
Facilities met. Katie, do you want to talk, or should I?
Either way.
Okay.
I'll do one, you do the other. How about that?
Okay.
All right. I think everyone at this table remembers when Dr. Winkelman brought the rusty piece of pipe from the high school
Yes.
next to the pumpkin. Obviously, a very memorable moment up here. So, tonight, on our agenda is the recommendation for the bids to replace the plumbing at BHS this summer. And we have a bid recommendation with a $67,000 favorable variance, which is always great. So, that will be coming up.
The other thing that we talked about, and we got a more in-depth explanation, but it'll be coming to the board too, and we've been talking about it for a long time, is the long-term capital planning. The community and the board was, is very interested in using this new facilities inventory tool that the administrative team has brought and put together. It's been hours and hours of work, basically, like, inventorying every sink in the high school, every, you know, floor to ceiling, like, the rugs, the carpet, the lights, you know, everything in every building, and when they may need to be replaced. So, it's, you know, it's very extensive. It's kind of like what you might do at your home, but like, times 700. And so, we'll have this as a planning tool to look at our facilities needs, and it'll help us look at our capital requirements and capital planning, where, and increase our summer planning budgeting for our, our capital needs, because, you know, as you know, inflation's gone up, and we get less for our dollar every year. So, this is something that we also talked about at our last board meeting at the committee as a whole, if you want to hear more about it from that too. But this is, you know, this is going to be a very useful tool for us and for our community.
All right.
So, I have two reports. The district equity team met on January 9th, and since we didn't have reports at the last board meeting, just wanted to fill everybody in. We saw feedback from the elementary facilitators on their professional development sessions from January 6th, because the middle school and high schools could have professional development on February 14th. And it seems the equity presentation was very, very popular and really went very well at the January meeting. So, they want to use some of the positives from that to make a worthwhile presentation on the 14th. And we brainstormed showcase options for more educational awareness in the community. We really want to get the community involved, whether it's a read-all and then have a speaker. And then we also discussed the upcoming Barrington Library Lit Fest. So, Saturday, March 8th, at the Barrington Library is something that, it's for the whole community. So, that was our equity. And then Social Media Awareness also met last month. I should say Social Media Awareness and Digital Citizenship Committee. And during the meeting, the advisory committee leadership shared analysis of the data gathered. At the previous meeting, the advisory committee leadership also shared an analysis of the focus group data gathered. What the advisory committee did is they met with parents, staff, and students, separate from our committee, and came up with some more ideas and some more suggestions. And again, it's a lot to swallow, but it's great that everybody's thinking about this. And then we had a presentation from Dr. Devora Heitner. She shared her research on social media and technology, and she is phenomenal, and I recommend her book very highly. And she provided further background knowledge and insights. And now we're starting to look at what we're doing next with future meetings. We're invited to select three policy priority areas, and then we're going to break up into different groups, depending on where we're really interested in delving further. So, we've got a meeting coming up next week, next Thursday, I think. So, very exciting. I've really enjoyed being on that committee.
Good. Excellent. All right, well, let's move into our consent, consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right. There's just a few things on there, but I think most of the things that are on there have been revised since, since we received this on Thursday or Friday. So, there are minutes from January 24th, both open and closed, and the open minutes were revised. So, I'm just going to take a little bit longer to talk, make sure everybody has a chance to review them. And a revised personnel report. Are we ready for a roll call? All right, let's do it. Sandra Bradford? Yes. Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's, I guess one thing on the personnel report, if people see that, there are a number of folks retiring. So, a little bit more than usual. And one person listed there, just worthy of note, Dr. Winkelman did, did And one person listed there, just worthy of note, Dr. Winkelman did let us know that he might retire in that timeframe, so we will be having more discussions with him on that.
And to be clear, it's the 28th, 29th school year.
Yes.
Four years.
Yeah.
Four years from now.
Sorry, thank you.
People have to announce ahead of time if they're intending to do that, so no panic yet.
Just wanted to make sure that we comment on it because it was notable.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got several action items. The first one, do we have a motion to consider, to approve the destruction of closed session recordings?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or questions from anyone?
Do you want to just mention the timeframe?
Yeah, we have the dates.
Oh, I didn't mention. Yes, so I'm sorry, July 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. It's in accordance with our policy as well. Thank you for that. All right, this is a roll call.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Diane Clapton?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to consider the approval of the release of confidentiality of closed session minutes? And that is from January 1st, 2024 to June 20th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just again, thank you to our secretary for her hard work.
Our secretaries, too.
For all the hard work.
All right, roll call.
Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the student fees as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, these are the fees for the 2025-2026 school year. We talked about them, I guess, briefly at prior meetings. Is there anything else you'd like to review here?
Just that we're not increasing fees.
Right.
Except for the ID cards, otherwise everything else is going to stay the same from this year to next year.
I did have a question. And I could be wrong, but I could maybe pull the high school students in here. Do high school students get a locker and a lock their freshman year?
They do. So all incoming freshmen, they are assigned a locker and a lock.
But they're physically given?
They're, well, they're physically assigned to it.
Okay.
Whether they physically go to the locker and utilize the locker, that is an individual decision that the students make.
Do we have enough lockers at the school for each student?
We do. Sophomores, juniors and seniors, I reached out to Mr. McWilliams, they can opt out of the locker, right? And many choose to do that. So we start with all incoming freshmen have a locker and a lock assigned to them, which is in the fee structure, right? I actually had an opportunity to talk to Mr. McWilliams, who's over at the district office today. I think over time, we have seen less students use a locker and locker assignment. And so, he is currently working towards shifting the high school lockers and the actual lock itself so that maybe we can catch up with what we're doing with the sophomores, juniors and seniors and change that process. He does not believe it'll be in place for the fall of next year, but I'm hopeful that I can have an update and have Mr. McWilliams provide the board and our community an update of what it may look like in the future. So we are working towards that, but we will, for this next cycle, still have the lock and locker.
Okay, so we approved this tonight. There'll be no changes for the upcoming school year, but we're going to look at it in order to impact.
And this may look different a year from now.
A year from now.
At least that's Mr. McWilliams' intention.
Just anecdotally, I've noticed a change in locker behavior between middle school and high school. I think in middle school, students are pretty dependent on it. And I think my son has an assigned locker. He's a sophomore and has no idea where it is. He just drags everything with him, winter coat, like change of shoes, everything. So I don't.
Your son is very similar to a lot of students. It has shifted. That's why we started the opt-out for the students once they've, you know, gone through. But it's a process, and I think freshmen are also now more and more comfortable of not having a locker. And that's why Mr. McWilliams is like, maybe we've told, you know, I think when they first said you could opt out of a locker, they were like, well, freshmen won't know what to do. I think they have figured it out, and that grace period probably needs to be rethought. That's why I was very careful to say they are assigned one, every freshman.
Right, right.
Whether they go there or not, totally different conversation.
That's a big caveat. So you could obviously opt out of the fee as well when you opt out of a.
So. Well, the fee is only for freshmen.
Exactly. Well, we will.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, potentially, not this year, but next year.
Yes.
Potentially.
Yes, yes.
So I have a question then. You don't need, obviously, you probably don't have it today, but can you get, or I don't know if the board is interested, but can you get us the number of lockers that are unused then and what our annual maintenance fee, or maintenance cost, I should say, is on those unused lockers? Because if they're not being used, I don't know that there's a purpose to continue investing in them.
Well, we have made some adjustments where some of the lockers have been removed from the high school. That's where some of the new spaces.
Right.
And common areas for students. So that's what I'm saying, this has not been a static. This has been slow change over time. And if we're not using them, we've repurposed.
Okay.
Those spaces. I think we've reached a point where I think we may actually be able to really think about it for all grade levels and then look to see where other savings are at.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Well, and I just wonder, have we asked our students what their interest is in this? Because it's about them. And I remember my students, it was like, the bus was here, the locker was here. So it was so impractical that it was like, of course, I'm not going to use that locker. But maybe my friend, who's a senior, has a locker in the senior locker banks by the bus, and I'll share that locker and they'll help me. And so, I think it's important to ask them.
Yeah, you may not caught it all, every year in the spring, we have a survey. And our sophomores, juniors and seniors fill out that survey, and they can indicate their preference. So we are doing that. So those three grade levels every year get to make that determination. Do they want the locker that's assigned to them or not? Do they want to, maybe their friend has a locker in a more desirable place and they want to partner up and utilize that locker and so forth? So yes, we have that 100% is happening right now. The only grade level that's assigned a locker is freshmen.
Okay, and the only, sorry, I'm going to ask for clarification, one more thing, because I get asked this a lot.
Sure.
So the co-curricular activities fee that high school students get goes in part to pay for their, they get to go to games, musicals, whatever, help pay for referees, help pay for the school's entrance fee and the things. When parents and fans come and pay an entrance fee to come to our sporting events, that money does not all go to the district, correct? Like, some of that goes back to IHSA?
Yep.
And I'm assuming to continue paying referee, I'm sure it's not all covered, but I just want to, to parents to understand that this, they're two different things.
Yep. So yes, we charge a fee for admission to certain events. The larger events that exist across all of the schools that are part of the mid-suburban league, there's actually a bylaw about, so you don't have one school charging one thing and another school, because we're all part of a conference.
Right.
Those large events, like football, basketball, that typically see larger attendance than maybe some other activities, all of the schools in the conference follow that same bylaw. And the charges is really about being able to help run the event.
Security.
Security, the gates, all of, like, the fee goes back for us to be able to hold that event and offer everything that's going on there. But then we also host IHSA, which is the state level that we're part of. So we're part of the conference, but then we're also part of the state. There are bylaws of what schools must do as far as charges and fees to the state organization that we're part of. Now, if we send that money in, there is a portion of it that does return to the school again to offset some of those costs.
Sorry, I just get asked that a lot.
Yeah, no, it's, these are all the nuances of our fees, for sure. How'd I do, Sarah? All right?
Yeah, great.
I'm speaking to your memo, so, yeah, no.
Gold star.
All right, are we ready? All right, so.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and we'll look forward to updates for next year.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to approve the BHS piping replacement bid recommendation? This is the good stuff, guys.
So moved.
Second. Oh, you can.
I was waiting for Leah.
Your facilities, you pick it.
Second.
All right. This was already mentioned. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I don't want to have a facility committee meeting, but are we comparing apples to apples just because the bids were so?
Yeah.
We did discuss.
We did. We talked, and we know this is going to happen from time to time, but yes, absolutely. That was one of my first questions, too, is did we have somebody evaluate all of the bids? And the answer was yes, absolutely. Sometimes companies maybe don't know as much about our district as others do, so they're going to take, you know, a different approach to things. And sometimes what we learned from Nicole is people will bid, they might know that they're not going to get it, or they can't afford to do it in a really cost-effective way, but they want to be on our radar, and they want to be part of the process. So yes, the bids are pretty wide, but we're getting what we need to get from a company that we believe is going to do a great job for us.
So the lowest bid, we're confident that we're going to get a nice quality job done.
Yes, and as you can see, that's in line with our budget.
Yeah.
So if our lowest bid was much, much lower, then we'd probably be having some evaluative questions about what they propose. Same thing if all of the bids came in much, much higher, you know, what's the discrepancy due to?
And then this column after BHS-based bid, breakout value, that's included in the bid? You're just breaking out for the courtyard work and the, I don't know what MUA is, but MUA unit, that's included, or was that an extra bid that we didn't take?
I apologize, Nicole wasn't able to join us this evening, so I don't know the details of that.
I'm sorry, I don't want to be on the spot. I just noticed there's an extra number.
I think I did notice that, I think. No, it's the, I think.
It says breakout value. So is that part of the original bid, just that you're showing a different?
It looks like we're not accepting that.
We're not. Yeah, so we, that likely is an alternative.
Oh, an alternative, okay, okay.
Sorry, not alternative, an alternate.
Okay.
Which we, if the bids don't come in where we need them to be, then we may not accept it, but we'll put things in a bid so that we don't have to go out for a second time to get some pricing on things.
Okay. Okay.
I think MUA is makeup air unit, but Nicole can correct me. I think it stands for makeup air unit.
Oh.
But that's just my Googling very quickly.
All right.
I think we've done that in other bids where we said, hey, let's do asphalt, but hey, can we do this extra thing? And then it comes in higher than what our budget was, and we say, okay, we're not going to do that extra thing. It happens different times. And sometimes it comes in, the bid's low, and we say, oh, let's do that extra thing because it's still within the budget. But in this, for this example, it wasn't. We did not.
All right, are we ready?
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Last action item, do we have a motion to approve the resolution of authorizing non-renewal of non-tenured teacher other than a final year probationary teacher?
So moved. Second.
Okay, this is an action that we take as necessary every year at the required timeframe. And I think that's, I don't know if we can say that. All right, let's go ahead.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, let's move into our discussion item.
Okay, this time I'd like to invite Dr. Byrne and Mrs. Weagle up to the table to provide an update on our instructional materials report. We had Mighty Maisy, we got Mighty Teaching and Learning here tonight.
Let's go.
We have one discussion item.
Let's do it.
Thank you to our students for staying to hear about the exciting instructional material.
Now, they can't leave.
Whoa.
We won't take it personally, it's okay.
This is your stuff for next year. You're going to be using these books.
All right. Maybe those hardy students back there, those mighty students, might have an opportunity to ask a question.
All right. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I'm here with Ms. Weagle, our Director of Language Programs, Grants and Family Engagement. Dr. Gill and Ms. Hanson are very sorry that they weren't able to join us here tonight. So an overview of tonight, you might remember that several years back, we were in the process of getting our instructional materials approved in the year that they were being used. So we did a reset several years ago so that we got the instructional materials that we are going to be using as core resources for the next year, well ahead of schedule. So tonight, we are here to share with you our instructional materials report for the 25-26 school year. So it's a discussion item on the agenda for tonight, and then the board will take action at your February 18th meeting. So of course, bringing us back to our why and everything that we do is our students and to empower personal excellence in every learner. And tonight's presentation, and specifically our instructional materials and that process, is specifically aligned to four of our priorities, which are personalized learning, future readiness, inclusive education, as well as stewardship. Next, I'd like to draw your attention to our curriculum review process that we use in Barrington 220. And it's important to know that we follow a cycle of continuous improvement. So what does that mean as it relates to a curriculum review process? So it encompasses four different stages. So stage one is that research and study phase. So we're taking a deep dive into the empirical research, our data, our surveys from our students and families about our current curriculum and resources. Stage two is the planning and developing phase. So this is the phase in the year that our curriculum steering teams are developing the written curriculum and taking a deep look at any core resources that are available for implementation within the classroom. Stage three is implementation. So this is the year where it gets put to use, both our written curriculum as well as any core resources to support that. And then stage four, so if you're not in one of those three stages, is monitor and refine. In Barrington, we believe that curriculum is dynamic and not something that's static. So curriculum is fluid, and we should be meeting the needs of all of our students in Barrington 220 regardless of the programming that you're accessing. that you're accessing. So we're always willing and able to revise curriculum to meet the needs of our students. And like we've said a lot, and a thank you to the students who are still here with us, we take a student-centered approach to everything that we do and keeping students at the core. So a curriculum review process encompasses multiple different components, including but not limited to developing enduring understandings and personal success skills, standards, whether local, state, or national, research-based instructional practices, as well as assessment for learning and research-based materials, which is why we're here tonight seeking approval for our instructional materials. One of my personal favorite things to discuss at the board table is our Barrington 220 learner profile. And since the adoption of our learner profile, which has the six personal success skills that we want all students to have from early childhood through our transition program, we inherently build these personal success skills into all of our curriculum since implementing the learner profile. In addition, we follow an integrated approach to curriculum development, specifically as it relates to our strategic priority of inclusive education. It is absolutely essential that all of our students in Barrington 220 are able to access the core curriculum regardless of the programs you're accessing or the services you're receiving. So the first set of materials we are talking to you about tonight is elementary social studies and global studies. We are very excited to share that we will continue using our award-winning social studies, global studies units at grades K through five with some updated core materials, mainly nonfiction trade books. The inclusion of these texts supports our Illinois learning standards for social global studies. This list also includes more resources in both economics as well as geography. And these texts ensure compliance with the updated Illinois mandated units of study, which are released every year in the fall. Now we'll transition to our secondary core resources, which is English Language Arts as well as Spanish Level 1. We are very happy to share that after a rigorous process spanning the last 18 months, the majority of middle school English teachers have recommended adopting StudySync as a core resource for next school year. StudySync is all green on Ed报, so what does all green mean? That means that it's indicated that the resource is fully aligned with standards and meets usability requirements for both teachers as well as students. So we did a synthesis of the feedback from the teachers on the curriculum steering team, and here's what they said. Teachers found that StudySync was found to be the stronger resource due to its alignment with essential questions and units that reflect their instructional vision. They highlighted its user-friendly navigation, making it easier for both teachers and students to engage with the platform. Students responded positively to the content, finding it accessible, engaging, and easy to understand with clear expectations for both assignments as well as assessments.
Thank you. Another curriculum area that we had the opportunity to really take a deep dive into and look at is something that's offered at both Station and Prairie as well as Barrington High School, and that's our world language Spanish Level 1. So our team came together over the last two years and really did a lot of vetting and looking at different options. And we are making the recommendation that we land on a program called Entre Culturas, which means between cultures, for our Spanish Level 1 students. This curriculum is widely praised by Spanish teachers because of its cultural content and its authentic materials that are included. Our teachers have had the opportunity to do a bit of a field study this year with the units. And some of the things that they have shared is that it really allows for creativity with our Level 1 students. It is, it builds language in a very thoughtful manner while looking at all four language domains, the listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The students are reacting really well to the meaningful activities that are built into the program. And it really does a nice job allowing for listening practice, vocabulary practice, and pronunciation. So we're very excited to come forward with this possibility for the future.
And before we close, I would like to give a special shout out to Renee for all of her help in rebranding the instructional materials report that you have, which includes all of our core instructional materials. So you will notice it's a refreshed one.
I did notice.
Yes.
Nice job.
Thank you for your help and support with that. So at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have related to the instructional materials report. And I also wanted to remind you that the whole teaching and learning department will be back later on this spring to bring to you a full update on the happenings of teaching and learning work this year.
Excellent.
And all these resources are available to parents to review.
Yes, absolutely. So our current instructional materials report for 24-25 is on our teaching and learning website, and then pending board approval, then this will be posted on the website, too.
Great.
Stealing all my questions.
It's just so nice.
Any other questions?
The Spanish program sounds exciting because, you know, invariably, a beginner learner in a language class thinks a lot of the things that they're doing is really dumb. And so if you've got examples that are meaningful and relevant, and it's going to be a better experience for everybody.
Yes, and so far, we've found that to be the case. The students are enjoying the different dialects that they're learning about and the different cultures that they're exploring. So exciting.
Sounds good.
Just want to make sure I'm reading this guide correctly. So I think it says in here that the items that are new are highlighted, but rather than like the yellow highlight we see typically, it's a gray highlight, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's correct.
Those are all the things that you just outlined.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I see those Spanish items highlighted here.
And for social global studies, there's a hyperlink because we have it separated by grade level.
Ah.
Because like the picture on the screen is inclusive of all the texts.
Gotcha.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that's involved in this because teaching day-to-day is a lot of work, and then doing something extra, like looking at a whole curriculum on a team and evaluating things, is more work. And then being willing to change your whole thing for the next year is more work. So it's a lot, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you.
Good job, Leah.
So the yellow highlight on this, in social studies and global studies, those are new materials as well. Okay. I was really pleased to see some books on, on like saving and budgeting, some of that practical financial literacy, because I think that's been a request from both students and parents, like, hey, can I have a practical money course, something on budgeting? So I'm very pleased to see that.
Yeah, and that's in alignment with our Illinois state standards, which in financial literacy is a part of our standards.
That's great. Can I bring my kids back?
Yeah, right.
Refresher courses are new.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind going myself.
Do they still teach how to write checks? Because I don't think they do.
Checks? What's that? What's that?
What?
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We are, I'm not going to ask for German because the board does need to go back into closed session this evening. So we do not anticipate needing to go back into open, but we will just double check as we usually do.
No.
So is that?
No.
Let's head back into closed, and thank you all very much.
Excellent.
Bonus points to you.